Let's start with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Brightingam?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Tran?
Here.
Councilmember Munetan?
Here.
Councilmember Aristegui?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
President.
And Mayor Klaffenstein?
Here. We will move on to invocation, which will be led by our Assistant City Manager, Matt West, and then if I could have Councilman George Brightingam leave it in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we come together this evening, may we be inspired by the richness of our diverse community, where our strength lies in our differences and our unity forms the bedrock of progress. Let this meeting begin with a shared commitment to making decisions that enhance the well-being of every person we serve. With purpose and dedication, may we continue to work in harmony, to uplift and serve the best interests of all of Garden Grove. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Do you please raise the flag and deliver a heart? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to go a little out of order. We're going to go ahead and poll item one from our consent calendar, which is adoption of a proclamation celebrating February as Black History Month in Garden Grove. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
And our Assistant City Manager will read the proclamation.
Proclamation, February is Black History Month, and I'd like to invite Bobby McDonald, who's going to be here to receive this, if you'd like to come up to the podium. Whereas during the month of February, the nation celebrates the vast contributions of African-Americans to our nation's history and identity. Black History Month is designed to recognize and pay tribute to the contributions that African-Americans made and continue to make to our nation's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas, the 2025 national theme for Black History Month is African-Americans and Labor. This theme focuses on the significant and profound role that Black Americans have played in the labor force throughout history, highlighting the intersection of work and the Black experience. And whereas, Black Americans as business owners, labor leaders, teachers, essential workers, chief executive officers, and more have made significant contributions to our local communities, state, and nation. And whereas, the observance of Black History Month highlights the contributions, struggles, and achievements of African-Americans in various fields of work, and encourages the continued advocacy for equity of Black Americans. And whereas, the city of Garden Grove is proud to be an inclusive community in which all individuals are respected and recognized for their contributions on a local, state, national, and global level. Now therefore, the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in Garden Grove this February 11, 2025.
Wow. That's pretty. That's real pretty, thank you. Oh, hell yeah. Sure, sure.
This is awful, awful nice, very pretty. Thank you. Again, I deeply appreciate the city of Garden Grove recognizing Black History Month, and it's really, really important this year for labor. Okay? I kind of related to, we, every now and then, the Lunar New Year and Black History Month crossover. But when I looked at it, and I was thinking about words today, when you talk about labor, I look at the individuals, our ancestors, that came and built this country, whether it was for free labor or you got paid labor, they helped build this country. We all did. And I, when I think of Black History Month and then the crossover and all the friends and stuff we all had to build this country, whatever it took, you know, it makes me proud. Again, I'm glad for this. I'm proud, and better yet, what, 10 days from now, it'll be the 41st anniversary of the Black Chamber here in Orange County. We were founded during Black History Month in 1984. So again, I don't want to say too much other than thank you. Thank you for this honor. I really deeply appreciate it, and we'll find a place in the office for this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so now we will go back to oral communications. I do have a handful of cards. When you address the podium, please state your name, your district, if you know it, and you have three minutes. We will start with Kyle Mason.
Good evening, everybody. Well, first of all, I want to thank Phillip for coming out and taking a look around. As you said to me, you came out a couple hours earlier, and you saw people over in that corner that we observed. I wish you'd come over to the Social Security Building and talk to the security guard and see all the stuff he picks up, all the needles and stuff like that. You know, the promenade, if they would pay for half that fence that we discussed, and the social, people who own Social Security, I'm going to hook up, find the people that own the building. I want to talk to the people inside that are, I already talked, I'm getting the names. And when I do get them, hopefully I can get them to you. If they'll each pay for half that fence, like I said, it'll stop a lot of the robberies through Walmart, the whole promenade, and then the fences for the bridges to get the homeless out. How does it feel to be watched? When we were in the parking lot, and I'm glad Sergeant Brown was there, the gentlemen that were asking us for money, isn't it funny? That's only a little bit of a problem. So, again, right after you left, you ought to see the pictures I got. It's unreal. We need to clean it up and make it safe for the area. I mean, there's people in our neighborhood afraid to walk around the corner to go shopping, and, you know? And it's getting worse. I left last week for the five, six days, and man, it's just unreal when I came back. So, but few people, when they see me, they know that I'm around. And I want to appreciate all the police officers that came to visit me and asked me to kind of slow down because of the couple people that I actually did injure that weren't supposed to be there. But I'm putting a stop to it. It's going to stop one way or another. These people are going to stop coming from Stanton and coming up in that riverbed area through there, one way or the other, and I'm going to do it. I don't care how. So, again, I appreciate you coming out, and I pray to God that Stephanie, you guys will do something, and please, put a fence up in those areas there and make the gray building over there where, the building that I thought maybe you guys were a part owner of, if you guys could somehow or another build a wall and put a fence in that area. I got so many pictures, it's just unreal. How many more bodies are we going to have to pull out of that place? I know it's going to rain really good the next couple of days, so it'll be washed away. There won't be any problems. So, anyway, thank you, guys, again, for coming out. All right, bye-bye.
Thank you. Joel Silverthorne?
Hi, my name's Joel Silverthorne. I want to say thank you for the Garden Brook Senior Village, and I just, you know, we all see each other, 400 units walking through the hall, and I know you were nice enough to come over one time, and I think that, it was nice when the police would, came over and would do their paperwork. If they parked there, that's great. That makes the seniors feel even safer, so that, appreciate it. Some of them are a lot more fragile now, and so we appreciate that a lot, and if they are, they... So I think with the new laws, the state and the federal, it's very important, that things have gotten a lot better. And that's, I've called dispatch, and I've been great help from them, so that's been great, just to see somebody in front. But they're, you know, they're, anything, if they do the paperwork there, that's, that's always helped. Or eat their lunch there, whatever. We will always appreciate that. So, you guys, this time, I think, I just want for the community to just say, no problems, and thank you for helping out with that, and seeing you all there. Thanks a lot, appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibs?
Mayor Klaffenstein, members of the council, citizens of Garden Grove, my name is Nicholas Dibs. I have some things I want to follow up on. First off, the city of Santa Ana allows people who make, to, that have disabilities or can't make it in person to call in. I'm going to say this again, I don't know how many times I have to say it, but you need to be fair to the community. If people cannot come here in person because they have a medical disability or, they need ADA accommodation or disability or medical condition, then you need to allow them to call in. It isn't, doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure this out. We did it during the pandemic. I'm asking you to be fair and allow people to call in who live in Garden Grove, who have a proven, can prove that they have a medical disability and can't be here. So it's about, George, and I'm going to say this to you, because you've said you're not in favor of it, and I don't know why, but I don't come up here necessarily to, I come up here because I have concerns, and I want the community to hear what the concerns are. And the people who can't be here, they want to be heard. Okay, that's number one. Number two, Bring Back Youth in Government Day. Number three, we need to have Safe Route to Schools. We need to have a youth commission or a youth advisory group. So I'm going to ask that the council member, one of you or two of you, put it on the agenda, please, as a discussion item, to allow people to call in. Let's get that out of the way, okay? Be fair. Now, what I want to say in the remaining time I have is I have the utmost respect for Deana Nguyen, who's on the school board, and Walter Munetan. They are not the problem. You recognize the school district, that's fine. I'm a product of the school district. I'm an honors graduate from Pacifica High School. I'm a credentialed teacher. I am very proud of our school district, but there's some things that need improvement, like we need to have ethics, fairness, and fair elections. And the evidence shows that the superintendent and some of the people in her sphere of influence at the school, at the school district, and two or three of the school board members, not the two, not Deana and not Walter, interfered in the election and manipulated the spending of taxpayer dollars. I don't have enough time to get into that, but you recognize the district last, at the last meeting, I agree with the good things that the district does. At the same time, the public deserves to know what's going on. And the election was hijacked, rigged, and sabotaged with the manipulation of taxpayer dollars, and that's what the evidence shows. So if anybody wants to call me, they can. My number is 714-715-7600. I can't live in a banana republic. I can't live in a country that manipulates elections with taxpayer dollars. So that's why I'm going to try to stop it, and I need your help. But put that thing on the agenda to allow people to call in who have a disability. Thank you for listening.
Senator Mayor, point of order? He called me out by name. So can I reply?
Yes.
Yeah. The previous speaker basically made allusions that I had told him I wasn't in favor of something. What was spoken, in fact, was that we already have a means for communications to the council prior to the meetings. I discussed with him that it was emails. We get those. Our city clerk provides them to us prior to every meeting. Anybody who has questions, comments, concerns, that has handicaps or disabilities, has the ability to send an email to the city clerk, and they send them to us, and they provide them to us free. You got your time.
And you don't get to...
So I just want to make sure that that is made aware to the public. It wasn't that I was against it. Some of the folks tend to use it as a platform more than for the actual, I guess, to stroke their egos more than anything. So I said, you know, we do have that system in place, and I just wanted to make that abundantly clear, that people with disabilities can relay their comments to this dais.
Thank you, council member. We'll go ahead and move on with oral communication. Is it Paul Keel? You're up. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Paul Keel. I'm about a 40-year resident of Garden Grove. Name my taxes. I've worked here, lived here, and done everything, basically, in Garden Grove for the, for this, you know, the later part of my life, the last 40 years. And right now, we have some pretty significant problems in the community that I live in. I live in a condominium that's right off of the freeway, and all of the people that live in the condo pay their taxes and pay their highway taxes and pay, you know, for their automobile registration, and we pay association fees and all that. And on the other side of the wall, between our places and the freeway, is basically sort of a community of people that pay nothing at all. And they breach our fence, they destroy our property, they come into our property in and out. They're not overly aggressive towards our property, but they do come in and do damage in our property, and just everybody feels that it's a safety issue, having these folks living there without any other means except for, you know, being able to hop over the fence anytime they want. And they've been removed several times, and they just come back, like, I mean, like a boomerang. They're back, they were removed this morning, and they're back this afternoon when we drove down here. And I don't know how many of them they took out today, but there's been up to, I think at the most I've ever counted is probably around eight people living back there. It's a real small area. And one of the main problems, there's two major problems. One is that they're in the drainage for the Caltrans property, and all this runoff water goes down into a, you know, a culvert at the end, right at the fence that they tear apart to come in, to breach the property to come in. And the thing is full of trash. It's like probably about knee-high inside the culvert. So when the rain comes this time, if nobody's cleared it out, there's a really good chance that it's going to flood into the street, and nobody even addresses that. And when they do come and take the guys out, nobody follows up. We don't see another officer or anybody from the city or anything for months, sometimes six months, maybe even longer. So, shoot, I went a lot further than I thought I would. Anyways, I really appreciate you listening, and, you know, it's a really important problem, and we're very concerned with it. It affects everybody in the community I live in. So I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Linda Towers.
Hi, I am Linda Towers. I'm a board member of the New Brookdale Homeowners Association. We are in your District Three. These are my neighbors here, several of them. Our community is near the intersection of Newland and the 22 freeway. I'm here to explain our continuing safety concerns with the adjacent homeless camps and their impact on our residents. Last December, our association management company sent a letter to the council documenting a long list of serious problems and very disturbing incidents that have occurred. We have not received any response. There are two homeless camps situated in the buffer or subbag zone between the freeway sound wall and our community block wall. To bring in their tarps, tents, and belongings, they accessed that zone on Newland. At a section of the chain link fence they have cut through. It's located at the edge of, at the edge of the underpass of the 22 freeway at Newland. Caltrans repairs it occasionally, but one person with good wire cutters solves that the next day. From my upstairs window, literally, I look over the largest camp. I see people come and go. They have no trouble hopping over the block wall to enter our common areas. On January 14th, I attended the council meeting with another resident. We both spoke and explained the real fear we have for our neighborhood's safety every day. When I reviewed the minutes of that council meeting, I didn't see any reference to the topics we discussed. Here are my questions. Has the council reviewed and discussed our concerns about the homeless camps and the threats they pose to our community? Have you made any steps towards solving this problem? We understand funding was approved to install the improved security fencing to restrict their access to that homeless zone. When will it be installed? Is there a person, a process for residents to receive feedback after speaking in person at the council meeting? And lastly, I just prepared six pages that I would like to officially give to the clerk, and they are a summary of my statements, a copy of the letter our management company sent you in December of last year, a photo of the larger homeless camp, the one I look at, a photo of the smaller homeless camp, and a photo of the gaping hole in the fence I took this afternoon at 3:00, and a Google snapshot of the fence location where you can kind of see the freeway and where the fence actually is. But I got a really good picture of the hole in the wall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, if you give us the clerk, and we're not really allowed to have a back and forth, but we'll make sure people reach out to you to answer your questions. Thank you for your time tonight. Patty Dawson?
Mine's kind of just, well, welcome, I mean, thank you. I live in District Three, too. You ever saw that movie? It's like District 13 over there. We have been having this homeless problem for years, and we are fed up with it. As I said last month, there was a dead body, they started a fire. Now they're graffitiing, they're decorating their area now, and like Linda had said, or Paul had said, this morning when I left at 8:30, the police were there, they were arresting somebody, two of the encampments were removed. When I was coming to this meeting, one's already back. So I don't know, my question's, last time I asked two questions. What can I do? What can the council do, or the city do, to help us? And the third question is, how do I get an answer? Last time was a waste of breath. Wasn't in the minutes, nothing. So if this is a thing that is a waste of time, please let us know. We're getting ready to do something on our own, because the flooding, and then what they didn't mention was, one of the resident's car was broken into, but he left his clickers in there, and so they went in the garage, and then they broke the window and went in the home, and luckily, well, for him, luckily he was home. It's getting to the point where I'm going to have to get a gun, and I don't really want to get a gun, I had mentioned that last month, but I'm getting forced. And if I do get a gun and somebody comes into my property, I am going to use it. And please don't put me in that position. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure someone reaches out. My last card here is Ali.
My name is Aziz Ali, and I'm with that group. I've never been to a city council meeting, but I moved into the New Brookdale condos in 1986, and I've been there ever since. I'm just grateful that my kids are grown and have moved on and don't have to live under the conditions that we're living under. I probably lived the closest to the camp. I'm 25 feet from the camp, but there is the block wall between me and the camp, and I monitor them pretty regularly. Years ago, when they first showed up, I'd wait for a Sunday when nobody was working and nobody was there, and I cleaned them out. Took all their stuff and took it to the furthest dumpsters and put it in. I didn't like doing it, but I wasn't getting no help. I called the police, and the police says, well, you have to call the county. The county says you got to call Caltrans. Caltrans says you got to see OC Public Works. I just got run around in circles and nobody's doing nothing. And here it is 10 years later, and it's worse. This past year, a fire truck had to come into our property two times, twice, to put out fires that the homeless started. There was a dead body found this time. Two months ago, my next-door neighbor caught one of the homeless trying to break into his water line, which comes in the back of the garages. He was trying to fill up his water bottles, and he was taking a picture of the guy, and he's telling him, what are you doing? And the guy's just ignoring him while he's taking a picture of him. And so he had, his wife called the police, and I came out, and I saw that he had tampered with mine, but he couldn't get into it. I have a lock on mine. But the police showed up, and we said, the guy's right there over the wall, he's at the further camp. And he said, we could arrest him, but I'll tell you what's going to happen. We'll take him down, we'll book him, and they'll let him go. And he didn't want to scare the guy, he says, and he might come back and just mess with you more because you had him arrested. So what's the sense of having him arrested if they're just going to turn around and let him go? You know, that's not right. And him and his wife, he's got, they're young, and they live in fear with that kind of crap, and it's not right. You know, something needs to be done. I caught a guy messing with an Edison pole, the ones that come on by themselves that are maintained by Edison. I have a picture in my phone. He was taking it apart with a plier and a screwdriver. I don't know why, but I was waiting for a big bolt of lightning to just knock him off the wall. I said, what are you doing? So anyways, I just wanted to add that it's only getting worse, and, well, we can't even have them arrested or taken away for fear of they're just going to be let go and come back, and if the guy's got a vengeful attitude, he's going to, he's going to take it out on the people that arrested him. So I hope you guys could do something.
Thank you. That's all the pink cards I have. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to, after recess, actually, and move on to successor agency.
Member Brightingam?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
President.
Member Aristegui?
Here.
Vice Chair Munetan?
Here.
And Chair Klaffenstein?
Here. Okay, this should be pretty quick. We have received and filed the minutes for the meeting held on January 28th. I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
I'm sorry, who is the second? Thank you. Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. Any matters from successor agency members? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn and go back to our city council meeting. We are at our consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion unless someone would like to pull an item.
I'll entertain a motion. A motion?
Motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay. We'll move on to commissions and committee matters. We do have the appointments of our city commissions this evening. This is going to be a little laborious, but I'm going to go through each one individually, and we'll vote on it. So we'll start with the Administrative Appeals Board, and I apologize if I mispronounce someone's name. I know how that feels, so I'm sorry in advance. I have Johnny Nguyen, Kathy Ladd, Power Tran, Calvin Tran, and Nathan Bowie. Unless there's any other discussion, I'll entertain a motion in a second on that.
I'll second.
Call for the vote, please. Moving to downtown commission, I have Elizabeth Deng, Jennifer Stewart, Catherine Mukatek, Lin Nguyen, Marilyn Tortolano, Rebecca Wymer, and Viet Tran. Yes, it's seven on that.
Is that five or seven on that one?
That's a seven? Yes, that's a seven. The only one that's five is the admin. Call for the vote, please. Moving on to the Measure O Committee, I have Chris Beard, Robert Sanders, Fernando Ferrer, Leslie Mallow, Mark Mechanic, Christina Liu, and Fong Chi Tran. Call for the vote, please. Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation, I have Hannah Jung, James Kester, Jennifer Tacne, Julian De La O, Kowain Payne, Rosalyn Rubin, and Mark Paredes.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Moving on to Parks, Recreation, and Arts, I have Andrea Perez, Daniel Gonzalez, Dolores Ruby Garcia, Kelly Price... Kelly Price, Majda Jeremi, Michael Marr, and Ted Stevens.
Second.
For the vote, please. Planning Commission, I have Bert Ashland, Fernando Cueva, John Ramirez, Joseph Loricchia, Josh Lindsay, Chris Beard, and Roger Flanders. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. And our last commission is Traffic, I have Cesar Morales, Dewu Zhao, James Webb, Jeffrey Sanders, Lio Flatebo, Ricardo Cepeda, and Maureen Blackman. Call for the vote, please.
I think it's Lio Flatabo.
Oh, sorry. I told you I was gonna mess up a couple of those. Thank you all very much, I know that this is, this was a kind of a monumental task. I think it really shows, though, the amount of people that are interested in serving in Garden Grove, and that's a good thing. And whether you made it on the commission this time or not, I want to thank you for applying and showing your dedication to the community. And there will be opportunities to be placed on commissions in the future. So keep your applications in. We look forward to, you know, new and moving people up through these commissions. And again, we appreciate your service. And if you're looking for ways to give back in the community, there are plenty of ways to volunteer and to do so, not just on these commissions, so reach out to your council members, especially if you didn't get on a commission. How can you help, how can you be of service in the community? Believe me, we can, we can put you to work. So thank you all very much. We'll move on to items for consideration. Number seven, approval of Amendment Number Six to the Orange County Humane Society Contract for Sheltering Services for Animal Care Services.
Good evening, Mayor, yes, we have Director, Public Works Director Bill Murray here to provide the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, how about we do that way? Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's city council is being asked to approve Amendment Number Six with the Orange County Humane Society Contract. The Humane Society currently provides shelter services for our animal cares, our animal control division of the Public Works Department, and they've done that since two thousand seventeen. Recently, three main issues have arisen that has necessitated a review and amendment of the existing contract. First is the need for the city to add some services to the existing contract that are currently not covered. We are requesting these additional services that will increase customer service and reduce some frustrations that the citizens are having when they do business with the shelter. Secondly, is the impact of the Stray Cat Alliance. They are no longer providing return to field services for the city. This function will be handled by city staff, but the majority of the function will be handled by the AAA Animal Hospital, and with remainder work by the, by the shelter itself. Finally, the new contracts will reflect increased costs that have been borne by the shelter during the pandemic, and recently, the, basically our recent inflationary costs that have gone on for the last, you know, three or four years. The proposed new contract with the Orange County Humane Society will be raised from two hundred ninety to three hundred and ten thousand and provide for services up to three thousand animals. There is also provision to increase the contract to three hundred and fifty thousand, should the city go over the three thousand animals. Of note is a separation of the OCS Services Contract and those services provided by AAA Animal Hospital. The AAA Contract is following, is following in our presentations here, and most of the contract increases are reflected in that contract. Staff would like to point out that this contract will sunset in the year twenty twenty-seven, and at that time, staff will competitively bid out this contract again. This concludes staff's report, I'm available should you have any questions. I also have here Heidi Poe, who's our Animal Control Services Supervisor, and she can help with any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, colleagues, questions?
Hello, Mayor? Oh, go ahead.
Or Tim?
I do have a question, either the, do we have like a service log or a report of how many of the animals we've had serviced, and will we be keeping track of that?
Yes, we do, we have our numbers for the past many years. I can provide those to you guys at any time.
Yes, please share them, I'll take it.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, this isn't a new contract, this is just to your extension to the existing contract, correct?
Correct.
I'd seen a few posts on social media and whatnot referring to this as a new contract. I just want to make that clear to the public, and comments will be later.
Colleagues, any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll enter, did you have a question?
Sorry, probably just the same question. I counsel children were asking about how many that we have last year, just so that we have, because over here is that up to three thousand car or whatever. So I know that I asked the staff, I'm not so sure if we got the information back on that. No?
I'm sorry.
Last year, last year, we did impound approximately one thousand four hundred and fifty-five animals.
And so this amount is up to that amount, or is that the flat fee?
It's, it's a flat fee. Yeah.
Okay. Because we said that it's only a thousand something, this one, we said that we're gonna go up to three thousand cars for that amount, so I just want you, the public, to get the same message.
I think in a perfect world, you'd get zero if you could, right? But we could go up to three thousand if we had.
The need's there, correct. Councilmember Philip Nguyen, do you have a question?
Yes, and are these documented animal that we take in? Do we have any type of document about what we serve, do service for the animal?
Yes, we do, we have various categories, and we can provide all that specific information to you.
I guess this is probably the appropriate time for comments, since I think, you know, when we went to the Orange County Humane Society, there was a lot of different animal folks here. And there's some very distinct groups of the animal folks. There's the animal, Orange County folks that just love Orange County, they hate all the rest of them. There's the wags people, who they just love wags, but they don't like anyone else, you know? And then you've got the Humane Society, who actually has a pretty large following too, that we use. But they don't like the other two, right? So it's kind of an interesting dynamic in that, the animal folks in Garden Grove here. But, you know, because it was kind of controversial when we first went into this contract, I know Councilmember Stephanie, at the time, now Mayor, and myself, we both did some independent, like, sneaky surprise inspections on it, just to make sure that it was up to par, and, you know, things were clean, and everything was, and it was actually quite nice. I mean, it's not a Taj Mahal, but, you know, it, it's a fairly clean, decent-run place, it's pretty organized. You know, they had groups of people that would go in and wait for a dog to, you know, go to the bathroom, and then they'd take a quick picture before the staff could clean it up, and, oh my god, you know, and there was all that kind of nonsense going on. So, again, it's not the Taj Mahal, but it's a clean, decent, adequate, nice place, safe for the animals until the owners can come and pick them up and reclaim their, their pets and whatnot. So, anyway, I'm pretty good with it, I know it saves us, and it saves our taxpayers a lot of money to go through them instead of the county. So, my thoughts.
Got a motion?
That's a motion.
Do I have a second? I have a motion in a second, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
And I would encourage all my other council members to go over there and check it out, drive in there, don't even announce yourself, just show up and check it out, you know, and see, see what it's like for yourself.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you, yes, I think obviously educating ourselves on the operation so that we can be transparent with the public is important. I had a fantastic meeting, actually, with Heidi and with Bill Murray and staff at the Public Works Yard today to talk about animal care, and I would invite my colleagues to do the same, just to learn more about, really, what is a monumental task of running animal care in Garden Grove. One of the good things, though, about OC Humane is they are only servicing our city, Garden Grove. And we have a lot of pets and a lot of animals, and the need is great, and so we have a good working relationship between the two. Okay, we'll move on to item number eight, approval of a contract with AAA Animal Hospital for veterinary care services.
Yes, and Mr. Murray will be providing that report as well.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez, Mrs. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, the council is being asked to approve a contract with AAA Animal Hospital for the veterinary care support services to the Orange County Humane Society. As discussed underneath that contract for the Humane Society, the veterinary services for the Humane Society have been removed and will be funded under this, this contract, new contract, for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year. The Humane Society currently provides shelter services for our animal control division of Public Works. They've done that since two thousand seventeen. That contract provided for the veterinary carrier, care that was required by the city. This contract includes the veterinary work previously conducted, also by Stray Cat Alliance, and that original veterinary work that was under the Orange County Humane Society Contract. So we've moved that over to the AAA Contract. And so, under that umbrella, this is where there is an increase in costs. So, these contracts have been separated at the request of the owner of the both facilities. The reason is, the Humane Society is a nonprofit organization, AAA is a regular business. So when you're looking at running the operation and taxes and things like that, combining the both was very, was, it wasn't, it was very difficult. And not, and it didn't work out very well for the doctor, such that he wanted to separate the two. So that's what we're doing. And also, in this contract, we are providing, I'll tell you again, for the veterinary work that was done by Stray Cat Alliance. Stray Cat Alliance has decided to no longer to provide return to field services for the city. So we're still providing that service, but we're using city staff, and then all the veterinary work will be done by AAA, and then a little bit of work by the shelter. So AAA renders basic needed medical treatment and care for, for the animals that we impound and bring to the shelter. AAA is located next door, so it's under the same ownership, and it's very convenient for the animal, or the shelter staff to run animals over to the, to the hospital to get the care that they need. There is basic care that's required, and we also have, it'll be under Heidi's control as to whether we provide additional care in order to save an animal's life and what have you. And she makes those decisions. Considering all the contracts involved to provide the shelter, the veterinary service, and the return to field services, the city will be paying an overall increase of a hundred and forty thousand dollars when you look at all of the contracts combined. This, this contract also will sunset in twenty twenty-seven, and, and we will bid out the whole thing at that, at that time. This concludes our staff's report, I'm available if you have any questions.
Colleagues, any questions?
Yes, I have, I have a few questions, Mr. Murray. With regards to the, the return to field program, is there going to be any changes from the, like, the cat trappers side with regards to how they operate in the program? Would this new contract change? Because I believe currently, folks have to get a cat trap permit, show ID, et cetera, call in, they bring in the cats themselves. Are there gonna be any changes on that end?
Nope, no changes, we still ask they fill out a permit, prove they're a resident of our city. And we actually go and pick up the cat at their house.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, they can bring it to us if they'd like, but we do go out to each resident's house that traps it, and we pick it up.
Okay, thank you so much. I do want to point out that that part is not clarified on the city website that has the information with regards to the return to field program. So I don't know if that would be a point of clarification that we could make on that page so that residents understand that that's an option that's available to them. Perhaps that's something that could, you know, encourage more folks to participate.
Yes, I can do that change.
Thank you. You? Councilor Bredegum?
Yeah, I just a quick question, and I guess it's the same as what you were talking about, the changes. If I, I think the Stray Cat Alliance, when they did it, didn't they do a clip in the ear or something so the cats could be identified, so if they got trapped again, they, you know, wouldn't get re-spayed or whatever?
Correct.
Are we still gonna be doing that?
Yes, any cat that goes through the program will get vaccines, a rabies shot, flea medication, and the ear tip.
Okay, they just tip the ear, that way, if they should get trapped again, they don't go through the process again, they don't.
Yes, yeah, we, when we go to a call, the officer will observe the cat in the trap, and you can visually see the ear tip.
Right.
And then the cat would be released, right there.
I did have a question on that, because I don't know the answer, but I'm assuming, the cats don't feel that, right?
Nope, they're under sedation.
Okay, yeah, I know that that was asked before, and I, anyway, thank you very much.
I believe the return to field program is a success, and is something that the community appreciates. Could you just elaborate a little bit more on that, please? Yes. Yes, we actually get overwhelming amount of citizens that call us each week wanting to participate. Sometimes it's, we can't help everybody because we don't have enough slots. And so it's been a big success, and the, the city, the city residents really enjoy it. They call us every day, all day, asking to get a permit, they come by the office to get a permit. We can email them or send it in the mail. And today, up to date for this fiscal year, we've released a hundred and ninety cats that have been trapped. And we've gone to, I think, approximately like two hundred and twenty trap calls. But out of those calls, we've gotten one hundred and ninety cats gone through the program. And we have the potential to do around four to five hundred with our budget. But we do, we get residents that, they love the program. We rarely get any, we never get anybody that says they don't like the program, so, yeah. That really shows the need, thank you so much.
One more question, maybe?
Yes, of course.
Yes, so this one hundred and ninety number, is that included in the previous number we heard earlier, about one thousand something animals that get impounded?
Yes.
Okay, so it's all part of that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a motion in a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, item nine, approval of a purchase and sale agreement with Michael Liu and Kim Family Trust for the acquisition of property located at one, two, three, eight, one Harbor Boulevard.
Yes, this evening, we have Deputy Director Greg Blodgett here to provide the report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we have for your consideration a purchase and sale agreement for one, two, three, eight, one Harbor Boulevard. This property is located on Harbor Boulevard in the heart of the Grove District. It's positioned in between the Griffith Lodge to the south, Sheraton Hotel, and Future Nickelodeon to the north. And it's west of the city's new, actually, west of this is the city's new Site C Hotel Development, which is a five-hundred-million-dollar mixed-use development with seven hundred new hotel rooms. It's also one point two miles from Disney's Ford two-billion-dollar expansion and five-billion OC vibe. So the subject property, under considerations, owned by Michael Dean Lau Trust. It's basically six-thousand-square-foot lot, includes nine hundred and fifty-square-foot house with a three-bedroom, two-bath. Property's adjacent to four other homes that we acquired, the city has acquired, for Fire Station Six, although we now have built this on West Street, leaving these available for a new use. So the site will be a total of thirty-two-hundred thousand square feet for future development for Harbor Boulevard. So the general terms and conditions are a purchase price of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A commission will be no commission to the buyer, all closing with no contingencies. And the closing cost is expected to be six thousand dollars, and a five-day closing escrow period. So at this time, it's recommended the city approve the. So at this time, it's recommended the city approve the purchase price and sale agreement and appropriate eight hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for the purchase from Economic Development Department from the general fund and authorize city manager or designated to execute agreements and make minor modifications. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Yes, colleagues, question from Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Greg. I think it's eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and you you said eight hundred and fifty-eight, so the other eight eighty-eight is going to come out of your pocket.
Thank you.
Hey, cut.
You have it correct, eight, five, eighty-eight.
Congratulations. I I think this is a a purchase well-earned. Uh, this property on Harbor Corridor is instrumental in helping us develop our part of the tourist industry, and uh we have three other pieces, which this kind of connects the dot. If anybody plays Monopoly, the board game, this would be a highly desirable. Normally, yeah, a few years back, this would have been a lot less, but it's not because this is in line with the property value at this time, and uh I'm uh very, very happy that it's going to be a part of part of our um properties and resources to develop in the future, a Joe Dovin museum of unnatural history. But congratulations, everybody voted on this, and I think it's it's going to be a huge asset, and thank you to Ursula who's worked hard on it, and it'll be come under your department. Hopefully, we can develop something great with it. Thanks again, Greg.
Councilmember Trent?
I should want to say thank you to our staff, because when we first talked about this, we got the preliminary um kind of contract, and when we looked at it, we looked at what posts on the public, right? It was a lot lower than that, but we already know the value of it and also the um where it is and what the plan that city, you know, in term of the view for the city. And so um make a long story short, by looking at the result, um the amount were less, and also there's some other costs that would be significant more, but you were able to remove it, so awesome job. I did not know that you would be able to do that, but that's so the hard work that you put in, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just a quick comment. I I I'm really happy staff was able to acquire this in a fairly reasonable price. You know, when you own the properties on either side of that small property and you got an owner who thinks he's going to maybe try to soak socket to you a little bit because he knows you want to inquire the whole amount, you know, so uh yeah, kudos to staff for getting that at a reasonable price, and uh and thank you for all your diligence and hard work on this.
I think we're all just going to be sharing great, great feelings right now, but I also would like to commend staff for doing such an excellent job. You know, we have a a vision for what we want to see happening, especially along the Harbor Corridor, and you brought us a lot closer um to to really beautifying the area and helping it reach its fullest potential. So thank you guys so much for all the work that you've done.
Right, well, we're excited about this. Yes, do you have a question or comment?
I am the one who very interested about this property myself, and I have compliment to the staff, able to buy it. To me, it's a good price, and because it's the harbor front, we can do anything with it. It's a good investment. Thank you so much.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, moving right along. Item ten, authorization of purchase order issuance to multiple auto dealerships for eight new police department administration vehicles.
And we have Public Works Director Bill Mary to provide the report.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez, Miss Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, city council is being asked to authorize purchase orders for eight new police department vehicles from various local dealerships for just over three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. The police department currently has eight administration vehicles that meet the city's guidelines for replacement and were approved uh through the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Details of the vehicles are provided as an attachment to your staff report. Specifications were prepared and sent to bidders in the local area. Only one vehicle, a Chevy Traverse, received qualifying bids, with Selman Chevrolet being the winning bid. No qualified bids were received for the other seven vehicles, so staff negotiated the contract with the appropriate dealerships. The results are listed in your staff report. Funds to purchase the replacement vehicles will will be paid from the Fleet Management Fund. Uh, the older vehicles will be auctioned off and the funds received back into the Fleet Management Fund. This concludes staff's report. None available, should you have any questions?
Colleagues?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question, just quickly. What's the life expectancy of these vehicles once it's purchased? How how long can we have it in use?
They're police vehicles. They could last a day.
That's going to come out of your salary, too.
On a general, general sense, we look at six years or a hundred thousand miles, but also some of these vehicles are used for undercover purposes, and if the vehicle has been quote-unquote "made," so to speak, then officers may ask for it to be changed out.
That makes sense. So let's say we can put it in use for five years at about forty thousand each. That's less, less than about eight thousand a year each vehicle for use year-round. So I I think it's a great deal. So thanks for negotiating it and look forward to put it in service. They're they're administrative, so I'm assuming it's like community liaison, uh report writing, and all their services other than a full police vehicle that is uh put in use for enforcement.
I'm pretty sure the chief has good plans for them.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Brighten?
Um, I'm happy to see that um Garden Grove Auto Dealerships are being utilized to purchase these vehicles, dimension Garden Grove Nissan, Garden Grove Kia, OC Honda World, Garden Grove Hyundai. It's too bad uh we couldn't get the Chevy at a at Simpson Chevrolet, but it's still good. Almost all uh Garden Grove dealerships here. I just want to remind everybody, if you are a resident of Garden Grove, there's a program, and if you buy your new vehicle from any of these Garden Grove dealerships, you get a five hundred dollar credit. So um all you have to do is show your driver's license with your Garden Grove address, bada bing bada bang, five hundred dollars off that new car. So um just keep that in mind. I'm glad they're using uh our local dealerships for the this purchase, and I'll make a motion, or unless there's more discussion.
I'll still take that motion. Do I have a second or any other comments or questions?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, uh before we go around the horn here this evening for matters, we're going to have item number eleven, which is an update on code enforcement activities as requested by City Manager Kim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I just wanted to highlight Community Development Director Nikki Wessel has done an extraordinary job in really building our uh code enforcement team, and I've asked her and her staff to just share a couple of highlights of some of their key initiatives that they've brought forward, and Raphael is here to share that with the council. Thank you.
So good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable Council Members. My name is Raphael Avila, Code Enforcement Supervisor, and today I will be providing updates on the code enforcement activities, which include code enforcement areas, vacant lots, and abandoned buildings, sidewalk vending, our tobacco enforcement grant, our beautification events, and ending with data on current caseloads. Our current enforcement, our current code enforcement unit consists of nine full-time and part-time officers with three code volunteers to provide assistance to our operation. Our code enforcement unit consists of nine full-time, part-time officers and three code volunteers that assist us with our operations. Previously, citizen requests would be assigned to code enforcement officers who would then address cases citywide. In July of twenty twenty-four, we created five code enforcement areas, with each area having an assigned officer. The designation of code enforcement areas leads to greater efficiency as officers can now focus on cases in their geographical areas. This allows our officers to become better acquainted with their areas and build relationships with residents, property owners, businesses, and other stakeholders. Next, on vacant lots and abandoned buildings, currently, there are forty vacant lots and abandoned buildings that we are actively monitoring. When vacant lots and abandoned buildings are not maintained, they often become an attractive nuisance with violations such as transit encampments, graffiti, illegal dumping, unsecured and dangerous buildings, and other issues. To mitigate these concerns and issues, uh we try to address it in an expedited manner. Code enforcement has implemented a shortened timeframe and deadlines for these properties. We also are in communication with our city attorney's office to explore other legal remedies, including receivances, nuisances, nuisance abatements, or civil injunctions. By emphasizing maintenance of vacant lots and abandoned buildings, we improve their security and encourage development of these properties. One property that we are focusing on within our vacant lots and abandoned building program is a three-acre vacant lot found at Flower Street and Stanford Avenue. While there are no structures on the property, there are a number of violations, including an unsecured vacant lot, dilapidated fencing, transit encampments, improper occupancy, discarded trash, debris, and graffiti. Due to the conditions of the property, the amount of calls for police response and OCFA response, and due to the potential impacts to the surrounding properties, code enforcement will continue to monitor these properties very closely. On the topic of sidewalk vending, code enforcement conducted a multi-language education campaign that occurred in May through August of twenty twenty-four. Vendors were advised on permits, permit requirements and approvals that were needed in order for them to operate lawfully. Unfortunately, many vendors did not comply with our required actions. Therefore, in August of twenty twenty-four, code enforcement partnered with the Orange County Healthcare Agency and began elevated enforcement, which included the confiscation of equipment and disposal of perishables. Code enforcement has also established an administrative citation process where sidewalk vendors may be issued citations. Code enforcement has shifted operations to provide seven-day coverage into the evenings and the weekends. To continue addressing sidewalk vending, the city has entered into an agreement via a memorandum of understanding with the Orange County Healthcare Agency to provide weekly enforcement. These details seek to curtail sidewalk vendors from obstructing the public sidewalk and to cease unpermitted food operations. These multi-agency details are coordinated with colleagues in Public Works and the Police Department. Since July of twenty twenty-four, code enforcement has had a hundred and sixty-nine interactions with unpermitted vendors. Updates on our tobacco enforcement program. In November of twenty twenty-four, the city entered into a tobacco grant memorandum of understanding with the California Department of Justice. With this grant, code enforcement will be provided funding until twenty twenty-eight for a designated code enforcement officer who will be inspecting tobacco retailers and providing education. Code enforcement will also enforce the state's tobacco flavor ban and ensure retailers abide by other regulations. Since receiving grant funding in January, code enforcement has conducted fifty-four tobacco-related inspections. Next, to highlight our beautification efforts. In April, May, and June of twenty twenty-four, community development participated in an educational campaign to highlight the services provided by the department. The campaign was dubbed Plan, Build, Beautify. The multi-language campaign, which included social social media posts and radio and television broadcasting, emphasized code enforcement's role in beautifying our community. To continue beautification efforts, code enforcement, along with its city partners, will be working to beautify the Buena Clinton community. In April, code enforcement, Public Works, the Police Department, Community Services, and a number of nonprofit organizations will give Buena Clinton a Day of Beautification, where volunteers will embark on tasks that improve the community. Code enforcement will continue to identify additional neighborhoods for the future beautification efforts and will target the complete and will target completion of three beautification events per year. And finally, some data on caseloads. Code enforcement continues to stay busy. This figure shows how many citizen requests we received for the past six years. As you may see, since twenty twenty, the number continues to climb. For twenty twenty-four, code enforcement received two thousand seven hundred and twenty-three citizen requests. Currently, our code enforcement officers maintain an average of three hundred and nine open cases per officer. Through our staffing levels, we address citizen requests and ensure code cases are addressed accordingly. This concludes our presentation on code enforcement, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the detailed report. We appreciate it so much. Do I have comments or questions? I'm assuming that I do.
I got a question. On the tobacco program, um I'm glad to hear what you you said, what, excess of forty inspections?
So currently, we've conducted fifty-four inspections.
Fifty-four inspections?
Yes.
Are you also doing that where they like send in a a police explorer to go try to buy a pack of cigarettes or something? They still do that, too?
That's next on our queue, yes, coordinating with the police department so we can have undercover minor buys, yes.
Oh, so they haven't been doing that yet?
Not yet, but that's currently in in works.
Okay, that was going to be my question. How many arrests have you made or citations on that that type of thing? I'd imagine nowadays it's gone down quite a bit, but I'm sure it's still.
There's, yes, there's a lot of education, advising against the selling of minors, but it it still occurs.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mayor. I I do have a couple of questions for Supervisor Avila and commendations. You really rebuild your team under you, but I I want to make sure that we have enough resources available to you. You said nine staff, is that sufficient for now, or do we need to hire more?
So with nine staff members, we are we are addressing it the best that we can. We're definitely a busy city, a large city, and um with the resources that we currently have, we are trying to take a hold on on the workload that we have, so we're trying to manage as best as we can.
Great, so um I also on the to to kind of beef up your your team, I don't know if it's related to the building department, but I think we might need to hire a a building supervisor because that position might be available. I'll I'll address to Nikki and Deputy Director is also here.
Thank you for that question, and we actually did at the in the last fiscal fiscal year, Councilmember Dovin, we did um have a building manager put into place, and that was really to um kind of shift things around so that David could focus more of his efforts on the code enforcement team. So we have filled the the building supervisor or building manager position in addition to in the past year bringing Raphael on as our code enforcement supervisor.
Oh, great, because I I meet him in the field. I meet David in the field, and I've always had a very good experience with him. Uh, I wanted the residents to know that code enforcement is not out to get you, not here to hurt you, we're here to bring people into compliance, and I've always had good luck with David and now with uh Avila, Officer Avila, we have made our rounds there, and it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, it's very tough, and sometimes there's some pushback. People don't always understand what we're trying to do, but you you have to know that property's value increases because of 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 good code enforcement. So we all benefit from our property values going up. Uh, as you see, we are paying more and more for our properties in this area, and any help we can get from the Building and Planning Department and code enforcement to improve our neighborhood. I like the theme, I wear it, see? I have this button, plan, build, beautify. In fact, it was up to me, it'd be build, build, and build, but we welcome all the builders and Zal, um the ADUs. It helps us with our housing element. I was interviewed recently by a Harvard student, PhD candidate, uh out of Harvard School of Government, and they're asking about our city and how we uh how we meet our HUD requirements, and I have to explain in length, uh but it's very, very important that we maintain proper development throughout our city. And good, like I said, good code enforcement, it it raises everybody's property value. It just makes our neighborhood so much better. So plan, build, and beautify in Garden Grove. That's my plug for it. Thank you, Lee. Council, Community Manager Liz Kim for requesting the report. I'd like to see them back in six months. I I think I've seen you in front of us. If if we could bring them back every six months or so, uh and commendations to W. Director, he's wearing a lot of hat, David Dent here, so um at some point, you're going to have to, you know, beef up the staff a little more than we already have, and I'm good with going to ten, twelve members. I think we we still a little bit underhanded, so that's my plug for the night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Councilman?
I'm glad that Councilmember Joe Dovin brought up staff because we know that your department also relies very much on the good faith of volunteers that come and help you out, so if residents are interested in volunteering with the code enforcement department, where do they go? Who do they reach out to? How can they be a part of this?
Thank you. Thank you for the question, and absolutely, we are always looking for. Thank you. Thank you for the question, and absolutely, we are always looking for applications from volunteers. We, if you go to the Code Enforcement website, there is a link to be able to, um, to be able to apply, and you can always contact the Code Enforcement, um, Department through email or give us a call, and we can, um, let you know how to do that as well.
I had a question regarding Beautify, um, Buena Clinton. Uh, what does that entail? Is it just the building itself or the community? Uh, what is, cuz there's a lot of potential for doing more murals in, in that neighborhood. Um, so I would like to know more about that.
Sure. Thank you. We, so this will, um, when, what we're going to be doing moving forward is we're gonna try to do, we're gonna target to do three Beautify efforts in different areas of the city each year. And it's, uh, we have our neighborhood cleanups that are, you know, basically our Public Works staff with Republic, and those are a little bit different. What we're looking to do is not only have the trash collection, but to partner with our, um, our, um, community organizations and nonprofits to do graffiti paintouts, to maybe plant some flowers, to, um, if there is very simple, um, maybe fascia board repair or anything that we, um, with, um, that we can do in a day to actually build up that community, and it's, it will also be in partnership with the Buena Clinton community or with whatever community members that wanna come out and volunteer and assist with the effort as well. So, um, this is really our first one. We're looking at getting food donated so we can have, um, some food there, maybe, uh, um, you know, Police Department booth or whatever so that we can have resources available to this community. So it's really not only to go in on that day and beautify the community, but then leave, um, some information and, and resources for people to know where to go for, for any future, uh, help they may need.
Um, thank you so much for that, and I would like to be part of that as well. So if I can just be in the loop for that, I look forward to that.
Absolutely. We'll be sure to let you know.
Um, yeah, I have very similar requests just when you do that, but also, um, I remember when I first started as a council member, I thought about doing something, you know, beautiful for our city, and I did talk to a couple of people, and I have, um, um, sponsor that said that if we do like a painting or something in our area, um, they would donate some money to. So that is something that, um, please keep me in the loop, um, cuz I see that you have the, the target area that you want to do something nice. I would love to be part of that, and I would love to make that connection so that way we could get some, you know, fun from outside to help with that too. Thank you.
Excellent. That reminds me of the Palma Vista neighborhood. There was a few years back where we had quite a large group of people, different staff and community members and nonprofits, and our Police Department came together and did a cleanup, planted trees. Uh, we have a mural in that location as well, so it's always, I think, well, um, just a great opportunity for the community to come together and well-received, uh, from the neighborhood. So thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it. Code enforcement has been, for the past several years, a key priority of the City Council, and I think opportunities like this to showcase the scope of work that you have, which is very robust, is always a good thing. Um, we appreciate the transparency and just the information. Obviously, vacant lots, abandoned buildings, they're throughout all of the council districts, and I really appreciate the shortened notification periods and the deadlines for compliance and enforcement. So thank you for your diligent efforts tonight in your report.
Thank you.
I believe that's just a receive and file at this time, so again, thank you. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to matters from our council members. George, we'll go ahead and start on your end this evening.
Well, I'll start off with, um, you know, we had, we had some folks, a lot of folks here today talking about homeless issues and, and whatnot. Um, I think it would be kind of appropriate if we got the S R T, uh, team here for an update, kind of similar to what, uh, uh, we just heard. Um, I, also be a great opportunity for them to give us some upward feedback. Um, some of the officers and the sergeant may be what we could do to help make them more productive. You know, if they're, if they have any suggestions or anything like that. But I, I'm kind of curious too is how things are playing out since the new camping law, um, camping ordinance went into effect and what, what they've been seeing, uh, dealing with that. Um, so, um, kind of ask that whenever they have, they're available and they can come in, it'd be nice to get an update from, uh, our S R T unit. Um, talking about service clubs, we, we, uh, did the commission appointments today, and, you know, congratulations to all the new and returning commissioners, uh, for the city of Garden Grove. You're gonna have a lot of work. We do thank you. It is a thankless job. I did it for twenty years, so I know. Um, you don't get paid. Um, you work, you, uh, get a lot of headaches, but, uh, my hat goes off to all the, all the commissioners. Um, for folks who are always looking, you know, I hear, where could I do? Where can I volunteer? What can you? Boy, our community is so full of volunteer. We need volunteers, uh, and we use them well. Uh, code enforcement just gave a little, you know, uh, if you wanna vote, volunteer for our code enforcement. Um, the service clubs, though, are great. You know, you join one of the service clubs. We have Kiwanis, Elks, Moose, uh, you name it, Lions, uh, Rotary. We've got more service clubs and, you know, and they serve a vital, vital component. Um, Strawberry Festival Association, the Women's Club. Um, you know, they're all, all looking for members, all looking for volunteers, and, and everybody, you know, everybody chips in and, you know, like, you know, the Strawberry Festival, that doesn't happen without hundreds of volunteers. You know, um, Strawberry Festival Association, so, um, you know, there's all kinds of things. If you really, truly wanna help your city, I recommend looking at the service clubs and, you know, maybe considering joining one or two of them, and, you know, I know I'm a member of Kiwanis. I think Stephanie, you're, you're a moose, aren't you?
Elks.
Elks and a moose, yeah? So, yeah, I recommend. So, yeah, I recommend, I recommend, uh, looking at the clubs and seeing what kind of feature needs. They all serve different, uh, type of platforms, you know, some, some are focused on youth activities and some focus on other things. So, yeah, find one that fits your niche and, and join a service club. Um, lastly, uh, the first district walk will be February twenty-second in my district, eight AM at the fire station on Valley View, Fire Station eighty-four. Um, it's a good time to come out and meet, uh, I'll be there. Our city manager will be there. Our mayor will be there. You're gonna do six of these, don't you?
I'm gonna, I hope I lose a few pounds after all these steps.
So, um, we'll all be, um, you know, if you have questions, comments of staff or commendations, if you wanna tell them they're doing a great job, we'll have our city staff out there, and, uh, you know, you can point out things along the walkway. Um, I'm gonna publish it on my, uh, social media so you can go there to kind of see the map. If you don't wanna do the whole walk, you can meet us at one of the checkpoints and, you know, um, there, and, uh, we're gonna walk the whole, well, not the whole district, but mostly just the west side there, but, um, you can, uh, meet us at one of those checkpoints and, and if you have any comments or you wanna point things out to us of, you know, stuff that, that concerns you, you know, you, there's a pothole you wanna show us or whatever, but it's a good opportunity to come out, get some exercise, and maybe working together, we can, uh, resolve some of our local, uh, quality of life issues in the community. And that's about all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Wayne?
Uh, yes. Interesting. Uh, today, I'm very happy that, uh, to see that, uh, we have, uh, approved city commissioner that, uh, going to help us, uh, to work for the city like you say, it's free. And, uh, another thing too is about the, we also approved the animal care. Uh, I love animal, so I'm happy about that too. Uh, the third thing is very happy about we able to purchase the, the property in Harvard. Uh, to me, it's a good deal. And also, um, I think, uh, our Police Department is very important, so, uh, we need to equip for them as modern, as good, as, you know, anything that we can do for them so they can serve the community better. Uh, also, I, uh, would like to thank you, the city manager and the staff, provide, uh, me and, uh, Council Cindy Tran, uh, with the Certificate of Recognition from, uh, thirty-eight Taiseng Bendan. Uh, celebration, uh, we represent the, uh, city of Garden Grove, and, uh, they're very happy with us. Thank you.
Councilman Tran?
Thank you. Um, couple items. So first, um, I, uh, well, a couple of us attend the youth, um, baseball parade a couple of days ago. It was amazing. Well, the one thing is that, um, you get to see the little elementary student walking during the parade, but also the, the way that they organize and they, um, uh, empower the little kid, the little athlete, and also, um, the whole time, they were very respectful to the council, and they make us so special. We feel like we were very like a VIP. But also, I want to say thank to Councilmember Ari, Arianna for sharing the ride with me. I didn't have a ride. Joe have a ride, but I did not. So, um, uh, we were just cheering the entire ride. So thank you so much for, um, having me to tag along with you.
It was my honor, Cindy.
Um, so that first, and then second, um, about Taiseng Bendan, um, event. So, um, I did not want to say that, but I just want to say thank to John Montages. So what happened during the process, the, um, the requestor forgot a step, so they actually did not submit the application the whole time until very last minute. They said, oh, nothing happened. And then John looked into that, oh, they never submit the application, so they were very appreciated. Our staff took the action so quickly. Just a couple of days later, they got their approval. So they did mention that during the event that I just want to bring it back, and thank to John, um, and our staff for, um, taking the action so quick to resolve the issue. Next relate to, um, the speaker earlier about the homeless. So first time when they came here, after that, I did reach out to, um, Sergeant, um, Sergeant Brown and ask him to have a tour with him and probably focusing on, um, in District Three, especially in that area, Newland and Twenty-two, and also Gilbert and Chapman area because we have many call related to the homeless issue. Um, and then after that, I did the follow-on with, um, our chief to, um, have a ride along, and we are planning for coming up, just because the last couple of weeks we were so busy with many event, uh, with the Lunar New Year. So, um, just for the record, we did not forget about your call or your concern. Um, we're just working on it. Besides that, during, um, um, the agenda review, I did talk to our staff, relate to the homeless issue, what are the step, what, you know, all the update. I know the Council George pretty good mentioned a little bit, but, um, I asked them about, you know, the navigation center, the chief, like all the little thing that leading to that. After this, where do they go? How many, uh, got houses and things like that? So, yes, um, you may not see it, but we are working behind, and sometime it take time. And I think all the council here, um, could agree with me on that. Next one, um, this one about the TED, um, festival at Garden Go Park. I just want to say thank to our staff, our police. Everyone did an amazing job. When you went to that, um, that, the park, you have to go to the blockers and all kind of thing. People have a concern during the, um, um, before the event. People have a concern that what if somebody run in, et cetera, and et cetera. But when you went there, you would see just, everybody was so impressed with our staff, with the police, and everybody was, um, overseeing that, um, so that way people feel the safety, um, provided by our Garden Go, um, police and the staff. Um, last but not least, this is relate to, um, oh, actually, the Valentine Day is coming up, so, um, in only a couple more days, I just want to wish everybody happy Valentine. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and colleagues. Um, we're still in the kind of the dead Lunar New Year festivities, uh, so I do wanna speak to U V S A and congratulate them on a successful event. Uh, it could be even more spectacular, so hopefully next year we can bring them back. Um, like I say, it's a year, one year at a time, and thanks to your policing and, uh, everything was under control and we had nothing unfortunate. Uh, there may have been some, uh, publication about other, uh, TED festivals, uh, in and around Orange County that's not related to, um, not related to our U V S A event here in Garden Grove. And I'm, I'm very proud of the young people who, uh, provided the traditional activities to everybody to participate. So I'm looking forward to bringing them back next year. Uh, I spoke a little bit about the, uh, the, uh, Building and Code Enforcement divisions, uh, earlier today because it's, it's very important for us to have those services being robust. As, um, Councilmember Barry Gimm said, we need a very robust code enforcement, but also to be able to, um, implement our policy in a way that, uh, it's not too harsh or, or heavy-handed. So that's, that's something that I've always tried to balance, and I think our department is doing a fine job of, um, recruiting and retaining, uh, because good, good professionals in the field is very hard to find. They're very hard to replace. So that's why I'm, I'm always, um, encouraging internal promotion because they're, they're homegrown. We've groomed them. We've, uh, invested in our staff, and we'd like them to move up, uh, every opportunity we get. So that's, uh, just an FYI, uh, City Manager. On the last note, the, uh, uh, Community Services, I think, should probably come in, report their activities every six months or so. We've had, uh, the director in front of us, and that's good to help us know what's going on around town, get feedback, and, uh, in one case, we, we took care of it, like, uh, Councilmember Cindy Tran spoke to our, our staff. But, uh, that goes year-round. It's not just, uh, certain events or certain time of year. So, um, I, I'd like to have, you know, the director come and report, just like the code enforcement did. I think that's valuable for our residents to hear about that and get good information from more meetings. So I, I also like, oh, happy Valentine's to my wife, Nidong Wen, and, uh, the love of my life, the other one is my daughter. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I recently attended the Cal City Mayor and Council Academy right here in Garden Grove. The conference provide new council members like myself with essential trainings on various topics. I had a good time connecting with council members from other cities and also, uh, gave us a great opportunity to connect with city staff as well. I had a great time. Uh, wrapping up the new Lunar New Year festivities, I attended the TED Parade in, uh, Westminster, getting a ride in the fire truck with my colleagues. Was a very fun, um, was a very fun, uh, opportunity. We waved and smiled at hundreds of spectators. Uh, afterwards, passing out lucky money in envelopes to children along the parade route was the highlight of the experience. Additionally, alongside Stephanie and Arianna, we were able to present, uh, be present for the U V S A opening ceremony, which was equally as fun. Not to mention they're back in Garden Grove, so that is where they belong. Um, also, I recently met with Chief Afara and learned a lot about the hard work of our Police Department. We discussed several topics impacting our community, uh, including immigration concerns. At our last council meeting, my colleagues strongly emphasized the importance of not harboring criminals, and I fully agree. Our priority is a safe community, one where children can play in our parks without fear, where families don't, aren't worried about drunk drivers, and residents are not victims of theft or violent. Violent individuals, um, regardless of their status, should be held accountable. At the same time, I understand that some in our community are fearful due to national policies on immigration. These are our neighbors, parents of students who attend our local, uh, schools, and people who visit our local parks, businesses, and churches. I want everyone to feel comfortable calling the police if they are victim of a crime, if they are in distress, or if they witness a crime without the fear of deportation. It is important that all residents feel safe reaching out for help when needed. Uh, our Police Department has built a strong reputation, and, uh, we, we don't want that, uh, we don't want to see that ruined by fear. I also, um, I also, I want people to know that in 2017, the city passed the Promoting Community Harmony and Safety Resolution, it denounces hate and supports the chief of police not requiring officers to verify legal status during deputies. Similarly, Garden Grove Unified School District passed the Safe Haven Resolution in 2017 to foster acceptance and harmony in schools for all students. Also, speaking of Garden Grove Unified School District, I recently visited Crosby and Stanley Elementary to support our wonderful PTAs, and it was a pleasure connecting with many of our families there. One issue raised from the parents at Stanley was pedestrian safety, I made sure to pass along the word and the concern to the city manager, and I look forward to working on positive, possible solutions to address them. And lastly, yesterday, I had the opportunity to tour some great local businesses in District 5, including Shawarma, Shawarma House, and Vegan Stop, and Jerusalem Roasters. It was inspiring to see the dedication that goes into creating great cuisine, and sharing rich cultures with our community. The big, a big thank you to Rashad from the Arab American Civic Council for setting up this wonderful opportunity, I encourage everyone to check, check out these fantastic local businesses by the intersection of Harbor and Lamson, next to the Great Wolf Lodge. Thank you.
Councilmember Orstegi.
Hi, hello, everyone, I, I want to start off by echoing councilmember Munyaton's sentiments, especially with regards to the issue of immigration and the concerns that are faced in our community. It is, it is important for me to, to let folks know that in Garden Grove, we want everyone to feel safe, and, and I really want to echo especially the point, that if you are ever in a situation where you fear for your safety, you are in distress, please do not hesitate to contact our law enforcement, we, we don't want folks to fear that they're not going to be able to receive help if they're in a situation where they fear for themselves, so please, do not hesitate, I, I know that these are, you know, pretty confusing times, but our police department has done a very good job of reassuring our citizens, and of course, the resolution that was passed in 2017 really echoes those points, so please, do not hesitate to reach out to law enforcement. To continue, I want to wish everyone a happy Black History Month, I'm really glad that we're recognizing this here in the city of Garden Grove. I also want to say that we had a great time at all of those TED festivities, you know, I grew up going to TED Festival in Garden Grove Park, and it was a big tradition, so I'm really glad that UVSA and TED Festival are finally back home, where they belong, and where I hope that they will stay for a very long time, so congratulations to all of the organizers who put the event together, and thank you to our police department as well, and city staff for making sure that the event went smoothly and that everyone was safe. I also attended the League of California Cities Conference with, with councilmember Munyaton, so I want to thank our wonderful city staff, our management team for supporting us through that conference, we learned very, very many things, we love a conference, and we're really glad that you were there with us. Also, the Doig Intermediate School mural project has, is up, so if you guys drive past Trask, you will see an amazing new mural, I'm looking forward to us honoring the students that helped get that mural going, as well as the artists, so I'm sure that you guys are going to let us know when we're going to do all of those fun things, but I'm excited to see that we have some beautiful art coming up in District 6. This past week, we also had the opportunity to tour the Central Cities Navigation Center, which is located in District 6, I want to thank our homelessness liaisons, Kristi Lee, for setting this up, I had the opportunity to tour this with Monica Cover-Rubias, Timothy Throne from our Office of Economic Development, as well as other city staff, so I really want to thank everyone that, that attended, because I think it's great that we opened up that tour opportunity to other members of the staff, not just the folks that work in that specific department, because I think it's great that we get, like, everyone to see all the really cool things that we get to do, and especially right now with, you know, we just heard so many concerns with regards to homelessness, I think it's great that we get the opportunity to see these programs up and running, so also, huge thank you to the project manager that oversees the Central Cities Navigation Center, Daniel Torres, for guiding us and answering all of our questions, I was, I was really impressed by this facility, now that they're fully up and running, I'm really glad to see that they've been able to successfully place folks into housing, and see kind of like the scope of what they're still able to accomplish. Thank you to our, our colleagues over at West Garden Grove, with West Garden Grove Baseball, and thank you councilmember Brightigan for inviting us over to your neck of the woods, we had a lot of fun at the parade, so much, I was working on my pageant wave with councilmember Tran, we got to meet R2D2, which was stunning, amazing, spectacular, very much fun in the Model Ts, and we just, we loved being there to support the, the kids. Some other just fun things to bring up is that the Strawberry Stomp is coming up, and councilmember Brightigan, you brought up joining service organizations, and this is a great opportunity in, in a way of participating, a fun way of participating, to support our sister cities association, I will begin training in earnest, guys, I, I promise, I will, I'll do the marathon, yeah, yeah, I'll do it. And another passion, just a little passion project, a little, a little shout-out, that we have a compost giveaway happening this Saturday, folks that know me know that I love to garden, and my plants are thriving partially because of the quality compost that I have gotten from our compost giveaways here in the city, so there is proof, the proof is in the pudding, this compost is great, so please, I hope that all the residents will go out and get, get their six free bags of compost, until, I believe is until supplies run out, this Saturday, February 15th, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, at the Garden Grove Municipal Services Center on New Hope, so go get that compost, spring is starting, get that garden growing, in Garden Grove.
Thank you so much. Just to the residents that came out this evening, pretty much the majority of the pink cards this evening for rural communication were about homelessness, we do obviously take great care on this issue, it matters a great deal, again, it's a key priority of our city council and of the city as a whole, I appreciate the residents coming out and sharing their concerns, we very much are paying attention to it, and I appreciate councilwoman Tran's updates just on hitting this head-on and working with the residents in District 3, obviously it's something near and dear to all of our hearts, and just for the community at large to understand more about what we are doing in Garden Grove, when it, when it comes to homelessness, on our city website, we have a whole page dedicated to how we're combating homelessness in Garden Grove, about our short, special resource team, and the different agencies that we've partnered with, and to really show that our homeless numbers are actually decreasing in the community, so I just invite everyone to head to our city website to take a look at how we are, I think, in a very robust way handling this issue that's affecting all of us here in Garden Grove, and, and everywhere, truly. And I want to congratulate UVSA on a very successful TED Festival, my colleagues and I were there, and it was packed, so I look forward to seeing some numbers and some more information down the road, just about the successes and how things went, it was definitely a celebratory weekend in Garden Grove, so again, congratulations on bringing the TED Festival back to Garden Grove its home, so thank you so much. City manager.
Thank you, madam mayor, members of the city council, I just have a couple items, thank you councilmember Brightigan for mentioning SRT to come back with some updates as, in relation to their homeless outreach and efforts, and so, coincidentally, we will be bringing back to the council in a very upcoming meeting, an update to the Comprehensive Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness, and part of that presentation, we will definitely include SRT as part of that presentation for, so thank you for that input. Once again, also thank you to the council for your support of our code enforcement staff, it's, they've been extremely busy with over nearly, you know, 300 to 400 cases per officer, they're trying their best, but I do appreciate your support to continue to bolster that unit where we can, so thank you again for that input. And lastly, I know we celebrated the TED weekend, but councilmember Tran and I took part in the Disney Half Marathon that routed through the city of Garden Grove, I barely made it out of there alive, I, I think for three days, I couldn't move or feel my toes, but it was an extraordinary time, inspirational, and just a lot of fun, so it was a great one, we also had deputy director David Dent, and my daughter was participating as well, so thank you.
May I say something really quick? I just want to say, Lisa, you and your daughter were my inspiration, because by the 10 mile, I have no more energy, but I know that you guys were going to make it to the end, so I have to keep pushing myself, so thank you so much for doing it, thank you.
Very good. City attorney, do anything this evening?
Nothing for me, mayor, thank you.
Very good, all right, with that, we stand adjourned.